Good morning, welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors Work Session for Thursday, November 1st, 2018. Today's agenda, just a reminding, a recording device will be used during this meeting. I'm going to turn the meeting over to the township solicitor for a public hearing to consider and possibly adopt an ordinance of East Brandywine Township. Chester County, Pennsylvania authorizing the township to enter into an intergovernmental corporation.
Cooperation.
Cooperation, sorry. Agreement for participation in Delaware Valley Health Trust.
Good morning. So this is fairly easy. The board has already considered entering DVIT, a trust agreement. It's a cooperative trust agreement. They represent many municipalities, government agencies, and providing various types of insurance. And I know Luke was instrumental in looking at various options and trying to figure out the most cost-effective way to continue insurance for the employees. And they, the board had already previously decided to go ahead and enter this trust agreement with DVIT. Because it's an intercooperation or intergovernmental cooperation, the intergovernmental cooperation law requires it to be authorized through an ordinance. And so, as with every ordinance, we had to advertise for a public hearing. We advertised in the Daily Local News on October 24th, 2018. We also sent a copy of the ordinance with the trust agreement attached as an exhibit, both to the Chester County Law Library and the Daily Local News. So I have all of those as exhibits. And again, the ordinance just authorizes you to enter the trust agreement, and there's actually a one-page addendum to the trust agreement. So, fairly straightforward. I'll answer any questions, and it would be appropriate for, if the board member wanted to make a motion to authorize entering the ordinance.
I'll make a motion, we adopt ordinance 04 of 2018.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Public comment for non-agenda items. Just a reminder, rules for conduct of the public meeting established by Resolution 2008. Time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted by the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting.
Mr. Scherbak. Please, just for the record, state your name.
Bert Scherbak, 300 South Caldwell Circle. I just wanted to talk on two things this morning. The strategic plan, I wanted to discuss that. And also tie in, the fact that I'm on the Budget Committee, I would like to just tie in some findings or some observations that I had. So, most of this is just my opinions, et cetera, and I'd like to tie that in for the strategic plan. Basically, I was here for the circus last public meeting. Everybody going up, it looked like some of it was an orchestrated plan to protest, basically because the first gentleman that spoke, I could see him looking back, looking back at Naran, going, "I got it for you," winking, et cetera, which led me to believe, and then when I saw his questions, that seemed to be orchestrated. Then we get a township employee who comes up, yeah, voices her opinion, but that's erratic behavior, and I guess I'm surprised that she wasn't even escorted out of the meeting based on her behavior. And if that's the kind of behavior that we have in this township, then that strategic plan might have been right about not being customer-friendly to people that come in or not trying to help people come in. Yeah, people have the right to speak. Mary Beth Medley with four pages of questions, say, "And I think after I'm done, I might have four pages of questions for her with respect to things that were done in the township." Why do people react this way to a report? Well, one way, it looked like in the beginning, trying to find a way to embarrass you, Jason. Jay didn't vote for the strategic plan, so I think people know that. But I think there was an attempt to intimidate, embarrass you about the report, about the project, the scope, the cost. But I applaud you, because you stood up and listened to every single question that was raised by everybody that night and answered it, okay? Secondly, people don't want change. It's clear. This township has been the same way for 20 years, and there's been no change. Nobody wants to change. They want it to continue on its merry way with everything being rubber stamped, and I'll talk about that later. Third, I think the truth hurts. That report talked to a lot of people across-sectioned its township, the longtime residents, the newcomers, et cetera, and I think it laid open the bare belly of the township and some of the things that are wrong. And I think they pointed out some of the top things that should be done, but I believe there's a ton more things that need to be done in this township. But at least we've got to start focusing on the, on the things that need to be done. I think the last change this township made was five years ago, and maybe this study should have been done five, 10 years ago, when we decided to add assistant manager. And basically, we did that from what I was told by the Board of Supervisors, was to help Scott do his job. I don't think that's the right reason to bring in a second person if that was not needed. And that was a $60 purchase, continuing, ongoing, and we may not need two managers in this township. But studies need to be done, analysis needs to be done going forward. Like I say, I don't think we've done a lot in the 10 years that I've been here. It looks like we're operating the same way. Let me talk about my role on the Budget Committee, and I'm proud that you guys asked me to be on it, because I think there's a lot of questions that have been raised that haven't been done in the past. First thing was when the budget comes to us with a salary increase of 3% across the board. So, as a committee, I don't know, once again, I'm speaking on myself, not on behalf of the committee, I want to make that sure, clear. 3%, I think private industry has been going at 1.5%, 2% over the past several years, okay? I can't vouch for that. But I don't know if 3% is a magic number that we continue to do year after year after year. Secondly, salary adjustments, promotions come to us as a committee. We can't do that. Board has to take a look at that and pre-approve those situations. And to me, I wouldn't be looking at promotions unless I had performance appraisals. Now, do we have performance appraisals? Have we ever done a performance appraisal in this township? And to me, if a department head doesn't do a performance appraisal, they don't even get a raise. Do we have personnel files? Do we have performance appraisal so we can see it for promotion or for salary adjustment? Or what about a merit increase for an employee that does better than the average? Why should everybody get 3? What's the motivation there? So that was a little disturbing, and we said, "We're not an HR department." That's got to be pre-approved by the board and the department heads. Secondly, expenses, like expense accounts. Carl Croft and I had the opportunity to talk with Matt to learn more about the public works. That was a new area for me. So we had an opportunity to talk to Matt. Basically, you indicated, Matt, right, that you use a personal vehicle to work here in the township?
Yes.
Yeah. And I asked you, how do you fuel that vehicle? And you said?
I fuel 50%, I did fuel 50% township fuel, 50% my own fuel. But it all depends on what I was doing. If I was on a trip, then I would pay for my own fuel.
That's funny. That's not what you told me that day.
All right, Mr. Scherbak, just, I've said it to other people, I just want to point out, just because it is a board supervisors meeting, I need all questions directed at us, and then we have to ask. I've said it to other people, so I want to be fair, that this is not...
Okay. Mike, what my thing is that when people come onboard, we don't have expense accounts, it appears. I rarely saw an expense account. I saw managers' PSAT expense account. If we have people using personal vehicles, they should be using mileage rates, in my opinion. Yeah, there's allowance now for a manager, but there should be mileage. Basically, that's not what Matt told me. He told me he used township fuel. And my question is, then if you're using township fuel from the day you started till now, and I asked you to use an expense account now, do you use, go mileage? He says, "No, I don't use mileage. I just eat the mileage now." That was my concern. There's no expense accounts. When I look at detail of expense budget, there's no, rarely any expense account, other than a once-a-year expense account. Lastly, I took a, I took a look at one line item. I got into detail. I was interested. I went and spent time looking at things, trying to understand what goes in the one column. And basically, I looked at a column called 40620 Supplies. So I'm looking to see what's in supplies. And let me just give you a flavor of what's in this, okay? Because there's misallocations in this, in this over the past five years. There's such things as legal expenses in it, payroll expenses, seminars. HUD's $2,000, you know, end-of-the-year health reimbursement is in this category. What is in this category that I would question is if whether things are appropriate or not for us as a township to pay. Example, we paid for Joe Boldes to attend a Cato conference. Why do we pay for a vendor? Employees, yes. Vendor, I don't understand. Maybe it's proper. Kitchen supplies for a year, we're going to Cropper's, Stoffler's. Paid $1,000 one year, $3,200 another year for kitchen supplies. One day, we went to Wegmans and spent $1,000. It's just questions I have, whether they're appropriate or not, and they may be. The one thing that was disturbing, the use of a debit card. I can't believe a township authorizes a debit card to be used by employees. I hope receipts were gotten. But that just seems insane to me. Credit cards, one thing, but a debit card just seems totally inappropriate, in my opinion. This year, I guess we, 2017, we switched to a credit card. And in 2017, with four cardholders, $10,771 was spent over 12 months. But our office manager doesn't show what was paid for that, just shows card member services. That's not right. And nobody's overlooking this stuff, which makes it even more disturbing. Debit card, New Year's Eve party, $628 by the Roads Department going to Pat's Pizzeria. Maybe it was authorized. Just seems a little high and inappropriate. Service charges, is that for our debit card? $800 one year, 500 another in service charges? But I'm not sure what that is. Amazon one day, one year, 11 items for $600. Over several years, there's Amazon purchases with a debit card with no memo to indicate what was paid. I don't like that. It's my money. I don't like it. Maybe it, maybe it was done appropriately. And that's why I say, I'm not casting any reasons to say no. Just things pop out at me. Two debits, one year, $4,000 each. No, no reason, no answer. There's no reason why it was done. There's no memo. One year, $5,000 paid, January 2017. No, no reason. Memorial donations range anywhere from 100 to 500. There should be an appropriate amount for that. You shouldn't have to decide, "Oh, I like this person 500, I know him 100." There should be something, a reasonable amount. There's a lot of things, oh, you look over the years, this is just one line item, and there's either no payee, or there's no memo, or in some instances, there's an amount paid with neither. It's just not acceptable. But who's in charge of all of this? Is this Mary Beth Medley, who had four pages of questions? Because if it is, I have four pages of questions for her. Somebody wasn't doing their job. We're not looking at what we're paying out, and it's disturbing. So, Director of Finance could solve that, and probably a financial system could solve that too, and that's what we need. And I think that's one of the things that was pointed out in the study. We need to go forward with this study, with the priorities established, and we need to put in changes. Policies, procedures, performance appraisals. I can't enumerate the things that have to be done. People are getting away with just doing what they want to do, and this stuff has to stop. Thanks for your time this morning.
Thank you, Mr. Scherbak. I just want to comment on two things that Mr. Scherbak said. First of all, he inferred that I was opposed to doing a strategic plan. I was not opposed to doing a strategic plan. I was opposed to hiring that firm without going through a process, doing an RFP, seeing what other firms were out there, and having, and going through an evaluation. That was why I voted against hiring the particular firm that we hired. So it wasn't opposed to doing a strategic...
I understand. I thought I said that you voted against it.
You did.
That's all.
The inference was that I was against doing a strategic plan, which wasn't the case. And Luke's hiring, yes, it was to help Scott, because we recognized at the time that the, because of the growth of the township, Scott was overwhelmed with the amount of work that he was doing, and we needed some assistance to get the job done, the overall job of managing the township properly. Your inference was, it was improper to hire somebody because we were hiring them to help Scott. It was not improper at all. Scott was here at past midnight many times, and simply was more work than he could, one person could handle, whether it was Scott or anybody else.
Well, okay, that's not what a supervisor told me in a letter, in a conversation, that it was really to help him because he couldn't do it, he couldn't manage it, and he had deficiencies in certain areas. So, I understand where you're coming from.
You're, well, you're casting, you're choosing to characterize that in a way like, it was necessary because Scott couldn't do the job. Scott couldn't do the job because the job grew beyond what any one person could do. So we'll just agree to disagree about the reason we hired Luke. And I want to tell you, I thank you very much for bringing up the issues that you brought up about expenditures and things. I don't disagree with you that everything needs to be identified, categorized, we need to be able to track what every expense, where all of the money is spent.
Thank you. Anybody else for comment? Seeing none, we're going to move on. We're going to turn it over to Beth Ullor for a pollutant reduction plan MS4 update.
Here to review the progress of the stormwater management program in the township, and what's been done over the last, over the last year, pretty much. And thought I would, oh, supposed to say EPA, DEP, and the municipality, and then you. So basically, this is an unfunded mandate coming down from the federal government, where each municipality that meets population criteria, that has stormwater discharges from township-owned infrastructure to streams, has to implement a program that involves education and outreach, monitoring for illicit discharges, construction site runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, pollution prevention, good housekeeping for municipal operations and facilities. So the program's administered by DEP in Pennsylvania, and EPA is really the enforcing agency of this program. So the first requirements, minimum or control measure, number one, public education and Over the past year, the township's reviewed and updated the program as required. There's a written program required and a target audience list, and has updated, reviewed and provided updated stormwater content for the website that will be incorporated. An article was published about stormwater management in the township newsletter in spring 2018, and I believe that was on the Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvements Plan status. And the township also published two new stormwater educational items to distribute at the township building, and that's an example right there. As part of this minimum control measure, there's a partnership with Christina Watershed's Municipal Partnership, that's headed up by Brandywine Red Clay Alliance, and the Chester County Water Resources Authority. So they do a lot of things for our communities that also count towards the federal requirements that the township has. And they place an advertisement every year, which the township contributes funding to, as you can see down at the bottom there, to try to increase awareness about stormwater. They also hold educational programs for children in the area that, East Brandywine Township, children participate in. Same thing for Paradise Farm Camps, and also the Chester County Envirothon. There's, actually, I believe, one of the Downey Town area schools placed second in the high school division this year. That also relates stormwater, stormwater issues, I should say. Public involvement and participation is another requirement. This, these type of meetings and talking about stormwater at public meetings counts towards, towards this requirement. Last year, presented information in December of 2017, which was part of the reporting period, at a public meeting, presented information on the pollutant reduction plan that the township's required to create and implement, back in June 2017 and May 2018. So the township's doing a really good job of continuing to keep stormwater in the forefront at these public meetings. Also held special meeting for the Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvements Plan for the Culberton Run community residents on May 3rd, to get input on the status of that project, which is also very proactive when it comes to stormwater. As required, we've advertised the pollutant reduction plan on the township Facebook page, website, and the Daily Local News as it's created and being updated. And of course, things like advertising the shredding event, shredding events, e-waste, and household hazardous waste disposal, yard waste program, all of this counts towards your stormwater management program, and we report that to DEP and EPA to make sure that the township's receiving, you know, credit for all the good work that you're doing. In addition, East Brandywine's an active member of the Christina Watershed Municipal Partnership. As I mentioned before, it's all of the municipalities in Chester County that are part of the Christina River watershed, and by participating in these group meetings fosters collaboration and also counts towards meeting these requirements. The next one, we've, this year, reviewed and updated the written program, completed over the five-year period, completed 100% of the outfall field screening, thanks to Matthew Van Lu and the Public Works Department. Published one new stormwater educational item related to illicit discharge, as you can see it over there. Part of this, this requirement means that you have to maintain your GIS mapping and your stormwater mapping. And this year, we've maintained an interactive stormwater web map app instead of just a PDF map for the township, so that you can actually go out and utilize the information that you have instead of it being a static document. We've also created the online stormwater inspection forms to create efficiency in the public works when they're doing these inspections, because really documentation is the most important part of this program. If you don't have documentation, then, that it didn't happen according to DEP and EPA. Here you go. Go here. This was an example of, so we'll play. Play. Oh.
Nope.
It's not going. Well, I apologize. This was an example of how your online mapping works very well, and it does, but my, obviously my technical skills aren't that great in incorporating the videos into the PowerPoint.
May have been my fault, because I didn't copy the whole file, I just copied.
I'll blame it on you. No, it's okay. No, it's all right. But anyway, you've all used Google Maps on your phone. It's very similar to that, except for that, the stormwater infrastructure, the detailed mapping that, you know, the county created originally for the township, and we've been updating per the stormwater requirements, the MS4 requirements, is an interactive map.
Beth, is that something that anybody in the public can get, or is that something that only East Brandywine, the staff would have?
Right now, it's the East Brandywine staff, and it's up to, that's up to the township, whether they want to make that information public or not. It can, it will, it can be made public with a click of the button, so. This requirement is pretty much taken care of through DEP and the Conservation District. This is your erosion and sediment control through construction activities. One new, one requirement of the new permit, which there's a little bit of debate when this requirement will start, is because technically, we're still operating on the old permit. The new permit hasn't been issued yet. But the township will be required to notify the Conservation District and DEP any, within five days of receiving a land development that has greater than one acre worth of disturbance. It's just administrative thing that needs to happen. Basically, DEP's trying to prevent any, the townships from approving any developments that, without getting an MPDS permit for construction, which doesn't happen in this township or this region. So I think it was really meant for the rural areas of the state. This requirement is, there's a lot more emphasis being placed on this right now. The stormwater BMP inventory is an inventory that's comprised of all the BMPs that have been installed, or I should say approved since, associated with land developments with greater than one acre worth of disturbance since 2003. And the township's responsible for making sure that these are, these BMPs are operated and maintained properly by their responsible party or the property owner. And with the new requirements, DEP's kind of cracking down on this minimum control measure a little bit more than they have in the past. So we've made sure that the inventory of these BMPs are up to date. There's an inspection program for a process for this, and then starting to build a program of making sure that these, these are being operated and maintained per their O and M agreements, because the township's going to be responsible for making sure that they're, you know, basically, when DEP or EPA comes out to do an inspection, they're going to ask for your BMP inventory, and they're going to go and visit a handful of these, and if they're not functioning, it's the township's, it's the township's responsibility, not the property. You have to make it the property owner's responsibility. So it's very important, moving forward. We did conduct inspections this year of the BMPs and sent out letters to, to advise the residents, and some of them don't even know that they have a BMP on their property. So it's really starting that conversation with them to educate them, and generally, people really do want to do the right thing and properly maintain them, so.
Beth, let me interrupt real quick.
Yeah.
So, the EPA and the DEP are responsible ultimately for handing down the responsibility of the BMPs to the township, right?
Yes.
So we're essentially, we're, and I think I'm hearing this right, we're paying you guys to inspect their, their request, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then, we then have to go after the homeowner. Why, why are we, why isn't this, and I'm sure, you know, the state has the ultimate say in this, why aren't they doing their own inspections? Why are we paying to do their inspections for them?
Well, when the, when the MPDS permit for constructions terminated, the whole, the whole point of the MS4 permit and putting these, these operations and maintenance responsibilities on the township was that all these stormwater facilities, once that permit's terminated, the state and the county are no longer involved. And they needed a mechanism for, for making sure that these, these BMPs were going to be maintained for the long term, because as you can see, like, we have these, you know, back in like the 80s, all the stormwater basins that are just in disrepair, and they don't fall into this category. It's only the more recent ones when they made that transition. So they did, they placed the burden on the township to make sure that these...
So they've, they've basically turned a blind eye to everything that's holding the bulk water and, and directed it to the more recent ones, given up on the old ones, in a nutshell.
And that might be something that Kristen could comment on, because it's, they, the ordinance is, you know, the ordinance doesn't apply to those BMPs that were installed before the ordinance was established. So, you know, all of those old stormwater basins from like the 80s, 90s that are in disrepair, they can't, we don't have the authorization to, well, you're not required to, let's say, operate and maintain, you know, make sure that they're operated and maintained.
That concerns me, because you have these bigger developments that, go ahead, Kristen.
I was just going to say, I'm not familiar with that interpretation. My understanding was that if there's a basin that ultimately discharges into a township facility, a township stormwater drain somewhere, the township is responsible. And the problem, the dilemma, is that things that were approved in the 80s and maybe even the 90s, we don't have sophisticated mechanisms that we have today, where you have a stormwater management operation maintenance agreement that gets recorded when a plan gets recorded.
Right.
That then goes back and makes sure that, whether it's a homeowners association or the individual lot owner, somebody is responsible to properly maintain. The township maintains the ability, in the event that the property owner doesn't properly do it, to go in and do it and charge the cost against the property. But facilities, when you're talking about like 1980 basins, if they ultimately discharge into a town... The township maintains the ability, in the event that the property owner doesn't properly do it, to go in and do it and charge the cost against the property. But facilities, when you're talking about, like, 1980 basins.
Right.
If they ultimately discharge into a township storm sewer system, I think under this MS4 program, the township is responsible. And part of the problem is, if the plan didn't maintain easements for the township, or there's no homeowners association declaration, which often was the case in the 1980s, there's really no way for the township to force themselves to go and do those inspections and get the oversight unless the property owners cooperate. In most cases, the municipalities I've been dealing with, the property owners have cooperated.
Right.
Because they understand ultimately it will harm them if their storm water facilities don't work, but it is a communication process that has to happen.
And sometimes, these facilities don't discharge into the MS4, and they discharge directly into the waters of the Commonwealth, and there, the, that's where there's a little bit more of, like, you know, do you have the teeth to really do anything about it?
I'm just envisioning, Development A was built in the eighties, Development B was built last year, Development A's storm water is failing, it's flooding out Development B, and then they're okay, Development B has to foot the bill to fix it.
I think the way your ordinances are written, though, with the Act 167 ordinance, I still think you have some enforcement power to go against Development A. And I think, again, the, the 36 BMPs that you inspected, were some of those prior to the earlier ones?
No, no, because according to the, you know, we, we're maintaining what the MS4 permit requires, and that requires, it's, it's very specific, March 10th, 2003, I think that's phase two of the, the MS4 regulations, is when, is when you have to, you know, you're responsible for the O&M of the other ones.
Do you have an inventory of the ones that predated that?
We have a pretty good, we have a pretty good inventory. It, you know, we have them, that, that they exist because they're part of the, you know, the overall storm water system, but it's not, like, in the form, you know, it's not, this is formatted, is, is what the DEP required inventory is.
So, Scott, this might be a perfect candidate for the county, because they have the Chester County program where they can document where things are, we just had this at the COG meeting, where they can document where things are located, and then we have Chester County Views, I think it is.
Chesco Views, but I believe Cedarville's program probably does that, because they're taking county information and adding it too.
This is, yeah, this information, the original information was generated by the county probably back, I don't even know, 10, 10, 15 years ago. A lot of that, those storm water facilities are in, are in the system, the GIS system. It's just one of those things that the township's so big that you'll, you'll every once in a while be, you'll, you'll still discover a new one, you know, like Basin X in Echo Delo, that was one that was kind of hiding behind, you know, hiding there and unmaintained. So, there, you know, there are those basins that you, you just kind of happen upon, no matter how thorough of an inventory the county or us, you know, could do, so. But yes, I mean, that, if you would like that information, we can, you know, certainly provide it to you and...
Well, I don't think it's worth, and I'm getting no offense to you guys, the county does it for free, there's no sense in our taxpayers paying to have you guys do it when, when the county just said...
But I'm saying, it's just, it exists, oh, I could just give you the link to the map so you can look at it, yeah. That's what, if that's what you, you know, if you'd like to take a look at it.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. But yeah, definitely use the county as a resource. They have a great GIS department, I heard they presented at a COG, and I know they have a waiting list of GIS projects, I think that they're implementing for the townships. So, if there's any mapping that you, you know, you'd like them to incorporate, certainly...
I'm just more concerned with the future, not with the past right now, because, you know, if we, you know, seems like the storm water management's really being a pushed item, and if we can account for that, I, I don't necessarily need to know where John Farmer's water main is. I'm more concerned with where the, where the storm water stuff is, that we're getting...
I, I think a concern has to be that, once all of this is implemented, DEP could expand that reach to cover the old, the old facilities as well, so we, I think we have to look down the road that we could end, end up being involved in those.
Yeah, and, and, you know, you end up being involved in them based on, you know, some, some, some way in matter, there's always, there's always a, somebody approaching the township about an old storm water facility, not this township, but every township has this lingering problem. It's, it's one of those challenges that everybody faces, I think. Just to move on to the next one, this is pollution prevention and good housekeeping is what, is, is basically what the Public Works Department does every day to make sure that there's no pollution to streams as a result of their activities, you know, so things like keeping the salt, salt storage covered, properly disposing of oil for oil changes, making sure that your wash water isn't entering the MS4 system or the streams, that type of thing, and documenting inspections of your facilities, and anytime there is a spill, making sure there's documentation. So, this is, this is all the things that, that the township has done over the past year to ensure that we're meeting this requirement and reported it in the annual report to DEP at the end of September of this year. There's also a training component of this, this minimum control measure. The, at the end of 2017, township staff attended the Chester County Municipal Stormwater Summit, and also, we held a multi-municipal MS4 training for all of the townships that we serve in order to provide a cost benefit to them and make sure that it relates specifically to their municipalities. To move on to the pollutant reduction plan, this is, this is the newer requirement, that is the big ticket item for, for all the MS4 communities that, that have it, and the majority of the, the communities in this area have a pollutant reduction plan requirement or a TMDL plan requirement. The two impaired streams for sediment in East Brandywine are the Culberton Run and that unnamed Chiribetary to Beaver Creek right there. And we are allowed to aggregate those watersheds and just place, place, um, projects within those areas in order to reduce sediment by 10% over a five-year period of time to meet these requirements. The five-year implementation period doesn't start until DEP actually approves the plan, and there's been a lot of back and forth with DEP for everybody's plans over the last year to, to get approval, and we're still waiting on, on our approval. So, in order to meet these requirements, we proposed two projects. The first one is along Culberton Run, the stream channel, in the Hideaway Farms development and stream restoration project. Stream restoration projects provide a large cost effectiveness, and in this area, there's, there's a, there's a lot of erosion, and it would be an ideal candidate. And then we have the Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvements, which is a project that was already underway and with the intention of taking some pollutant reduction credit for it. So, here's Hawthorne Drive, road, erosion along the roadside, we're going to be reestablishing some vegetated swales along the roadway and installing five infiltration trenches slash storage beds within the township roadway. It will, the project will provide almost a 3% sediment reduction, and it's in the design process, hope to go to construction the beginning of 2019, and we are waiting for a response to the Grown Greener Plus grant that we, we applied for in July to see if there is funding for this project. And Culberton Run Stream Restoration, this is a minimum of 425 linear feet of stream restoration in order to meet the 10% reduction for the five-year period, with the opportunity to potentially increase the scope if you want to get ahead of the requirements in, in the next permit period. The property owners, the estates at Hideaway Farms, HOA, provides a 7.5% sediment reduction, and we presented information, Matthew Van Lou and I, to the homeowners association at their board meeting on July 26th to introduce the concept to them. There is a conservation easement that the Army Corps has as a part of that development along the stream channels, so we're in process of coordinating with the Army Corps to see, you know, how it would work to implement a stream restoration project in this area and establish communication there. And the next step would be to conduct a feasibility study and get a concept plan once DEP approves the pollutant reduction plan.
Beth, is that all on HOA property, or is that on private property?
It's all HOA property, so if you, if you see here, there's one, there's one length in the middle, it's kind of hard to see, because there's tons of lines on the plan, but the area that's hatched green, those are the, those are the areas that are on HOA property, and there's one private property in the middle that if that, you know, if, if that homeowner wanted to be a part of the project, you know, it would certainly be an ideal, ideal thing to connect it all, you know, but that's all up to the township, whether they want to increase the scope to do more than 425 linear feet. Certainly, certainly would make sense to do it all at once, and that may alleviate a lot of the future sediment reduction requirements in this watershed.
Well, it's cumulative. If we do it within the first five-year period.
Right.
Exceed our requirement, it applies to the requirement in the next...
DEP has said that if you exceed your requirements in the five-year period, it can count towards the next permit requirement. I don't know exactly what that means, because sometimes their interpretation of how it is counted is a little, is, varies, you know, so they're, they're, they, but they have said that it will count, you know. I would imagine that if you, if you did a stream restoration project in this area, you know, you would be in, you would be in good shape as far as, as far as, at least the Culberton Run watershed is concerned.
But I would want something, something in writing from DEP that confirms that if you're going to do more than what you need to, that they're going to apply that to your next permit.
Right now, but we don't know what, like, like you said, we don't know exactly what that means. That could just mean it reduces the baseline load that you start from, it doesn't necessarily mean, doesn't mean that you don't actually have to do anything. So, yes, we would definitely want to do that, you know, get that in writing, that if we, if we achieve five, 10%, I'm sorry, if we achieve 15% reduction in five years, then can we, are we, do we not have to do anything that, you know, next year type of thing, next five years, and get that in writing from them? I would agree, that's, that would be the next step. You know, there's also opportunity to look at other partners in, in this project, because West Brandywine also has, has requirements for sediment reduction as well for Culberton Run, and I'm not sure what their, their plan is. This is just where you can see the extreme meander bends here in this area, it shows the, the erosion of the stream channel, and then there's an example of, of the erosion on the bank. So, there, there's some significant sediment entering the stream there, and this is, this is the actual part of the stream that's listed as impaired, so it makes sense. What to expect in 2019, eventually by 2022, the storm water ordinance will have to be updated according to MS4 requirements. Probably going to want to take a look at that, you know, as the, in the coming years, because it will be by September 30th, 2022, that the update's...
Is the county going to do any sort of model like they did?
I'm sure they will. I'm sure they'll put some model, and with options and things like that to address, to address these requirements. Like I said, the storm water BMP operations and maintenance, there's increased emphasis on this, partly because of your requirements for the minimum control measure five, but also that, you know, we were able to reduce the township's responsibility to implement proposed BMPs for your pollutant reduction plan, because we took credit for existing BMPs that are already in the ground. So, that's another incentive to make sure that they're being properly operated, maintained by their responsible party, because if, if they aren't, then we no longer can take credit for, for those existing BMPs in the pollutant reduction plan. In 2019 or by 2019, we expect the pollutant reduction plan to be approved by DEP, it's sitting there waiting for approval right now. You know, we have had, like, kind of verbal sign-off that it's, it's good to go, but we're, you know, waiting for that official authorization. There haven't been many, there's pretty, I think that, I've heard of one permit that's been issued and plan that's been approved in at least Chester County. I haven't heard of many others, so it, you know, it's, it's, it's been a slow process. That was our, that was our plan, by the way. I'll get myself a little. Construction of Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvements, we hoped first quarter of 2019 that, that they, that will go to construction, and then once the PRP is approved, initiate a feasibility study for the stream restoration. And then also, as always, keep an eye for funding for these projects, because, you know, it's just going to be increasingly competitive. So, every grown greener round, we should be submitting for something, every, you know, every storm water grant, you know, just to try to, try to obtain some funding for this, these projects. The feasibility study and concept plan for the, the stream restoration will really provide a foundation to go after these grants as well. Beth, I'm... All right, it was extra long today.
Does the township have their NPDS, their MS4 permit approved, and it's just the pollutant reduction plan that's not approved?
No, nobody, neither, yeah, so they're not, they're not issuing permit approvals without the plan approvals, so right now, they're operating, the permits automatically became effective for general permits, so East Brandywine is individual permits, so that's extending the old permit, still is administratively extended. So, technically, the new permit requirements won't be initiated until they get that individual...
Is anybody telling you when they're expecting to have that approved?
No. No, they, I mean, they, DEP has said that statewide, they've completed 75% of the reviews. That doesn't mean that 75% of the permits are issued. They, they, they're very careful about how they, they're phrasing that, so...
And what's the municipality that it did get approved, and why, was it different there?
I don't know, it's South Coatsville Borough. I'm not really sure why. It was, I don't know if it was a streamlined process, and, you know, they just, I will say that we got a review letters earlier than a lot of other municipalities, you know, so they got back in quicker. There's some people that haven't even gotten their first review yet, so. The bulk of these reviews are in the southeast region, so that's part of why, you know, I would, I don't know what the percentage is, but the vast majority of these requirements are in the southeast region of the state, so that's, their staff is overloaded for sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move on to minutes of previous meetings. East and West Brandywine Townships Board of Supervisors Special Joint Meeting from October 16th, 2018.
Motion may be approved or submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the Board of Supervisors, October 18th, 2018.
Motion may be approved or submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, moving on to old business, Bonsville Mill Committee Presentation. Jim Buxwala, Chairman.
Good morning, everyone. Hud Volts.
Hud Volts.
I am the Vice Chair of the Bonsville Committee and the Boards Liaison to the Horticultural Committee. We have some very good news, exciting news to share with you today. We hosted a meet and greet on Sunday. The Horticultural Committee is chaired by David Culp, who has been in the minute. He invited the local all-stars, regional all-stars, people in the area, to have the ability to get us over the top on this part of our, on this part of our venture. Phase three, as you know, is something that's been aggronizing for about two years. We've developed it slowly so we can get it right. Now we have artists' renderings to share with you. Seven out of nine attendees of the Horticultural Committee showed up on Sunday, two others passed their regrets, so we really, I think, are moving ahead very well. I want to introduce David Culp, internationally known horticulturist and my neighbor, obviously, but also an author who's worked very tirelessly on this project. Everyone who's willing to be involved with this will also be a volunteer, so this is at no cost to the township. There is no cost for the reception that we had, it was well-attended, very interesting mix of people, but also, I wanted to thank the township for including us in the committee or the budget for this year, funding us in full. I know that was a difficult task, but with some creative minds in the room, including the Budget Committee members, we're going to be able to really push this thing from here on out. Jim Buxwala and I will be writing grants from here to the end of the year. Hopefully, we'll have some positive results to go along with our fundraising, but for now, I want to introduce our consultant, David Culp.
Good morning. I get the lucky job. I get to ice the cake. I'd like to thank the Bonsville Committee for all the work that they've done for the past years, shoring up the building. I've watched them for that time. They've done such wonderful work with restoring the building, hauling out a lot of junk, and it's exciting to take a space that needed somebody to love it and make it a public area. I've worked on a lot of projects for my company, Sunny Border Nursery, it's the oldest nursery in America, the largest on the east coast. We've done a lot of work in New York, Hudson Pier, Battery City Park, the High Line, Barclay Building, we've supplied the plants on and on for Public Works, and I personally do private design clients largely in Delaware and in Maine. But it's very exciting. I look at this and I see the mill... I look at this and I see the mill, and I go back and I see all the people who spent their lives working in there and living across the road at all the mill houses. And to give them and the people who live in the township a garden that's like none other, I think I have that possibility to do that. They deserve a very beautiful garden. They are the fabric of America. They deserve a beautiful garden as much as they do down at Winter Tour, maybe even more so. I want to celebrate that fact. The juxtaposition of the garden against the hardscape of the mill came easy to me. The design process itself was a little bit secondary. The committee met in our general consensus for the direction of this mill garden is where ecology meets aesthetics. So, it's going to be hopefully beautiful as well as ecologically sound, sustainable, no pesticides, low water usage, everything that will take us forward in the world of gardening. Let's see if I can get this right. I have concept boards made up for the committee. I'd like to share them briefly with you so you know what I'm talking about. They change daily and weekly as I get new ideas. I usually present my concepts to them and then we fledge them out. We all know why we love the mill. I've loved it. I've lived in the township for 27 years, and I always drove by and go, gee, I'd like to go exploring there, but I hope my tetanus shots are up to date. But now, I'm no longer afraid. I look at this and I see the possibility of not only a township garden, but a garden and I'm sure and all the committee members that will impact this whole region of the Delaware Valley. This is going to be a regional draw. In New York, the number one tourist attraction is the High Line, which is a garden. It's millions of people visit it. I think we'll have lots of people visit us because it's going to be a little different than other gardens. What it can do to revitalize that sector of the township, property values, usage, it's all going to be good. It will be a blueprint for how communities can move forward. This was the first design, and I'll go through it in a little detail with you. It is somewhat formal, but I need the strength of that design to contrast with the strength of the building. This is walking over the bridge. I believe we have plans to restore that one building there to make it an educational. Again, trying to make this area a hub of horticultural and artistic endeavors up and down the Brandywine River Valley. We'll have a place to do it. You look at this spot, this is the garden there is roughly two acres. This is what I hope to put on that spot, something like this. This is a private garden that I designed in Delaware. This is two acres. It is a low grass meadow border. It's very restrained in color, but all the grass is used there are only up to my knees. So, you look across a plain as if you're looking across a meadow. That informal planting style, again, is in juxtaposition to the formal plant. We'll have paths through the water. So, your experience of walking through, you can walk through this garden. Basically, 99% all native plants. Like right now, asters would be blooming in with the fall grasses. Some of them can remain standing through the winter. My meadows are usually cut down once a year by a string trimmer, so they're low maintenance. But I have had garden clubs, scout troops, people who were at the meeting Sunday volunteer to form maintenance groups to help maintain this garden, again, bringing the community together to make this a community garden and an educational center as well. If you face south along the lower parking lot, I'd like to make that like a very colorful screen in the autumn, maybe using our native trees. Mississauga, again, a big bang of color for the autumn as you look down. I'll use lots of sumax. Those usually grow as roadside weeds, but there are some very ornamental sumax. They look appropriate for a ruined garden or a garden the age of the mill, keeping appropriate plants in there. We start in spring, and about the only plant that I don't plan to use that's native right now are the miniature daffodils. This is at Longwood where I teach. You can either do standard tete-a-tets or you can do very fancy antique cultivars. But the main thing is that they're only about six to eight inches tall, so you don't have to cut back the foliage. The other plants just grow over them. So, it'd be a mass of yellow come spring, deer resistant. Behind the mill, I'd like to surround it with lots of native dogwoods and native red buds. That will be the backdrop of the mill itself, a very romantic take. And that's probably what grew there at one time to begin with. I'm just going to stylize it and put it back. We have the possibility of doing memorial trees. We need to really bank that in. That may be one of our first projects is to get the backdrop behind the mill. Very beautiful. Bulbs like Camassia would come after that, native plant edible. You could throw in poppy seeds. That's so easy to do as an annual. June becomes very important month for us in the garden because I see the potential as a multi-use space of having weddings there. So, what more classic than a field of daisies with a plant called Baptisia australis Carolina Moonlight, which again is native. So, you'll have that vertical form with the Baptisia and the round daisies together. Lovely place to have weddings at the mill. Okay, we can do this. You could even do seed mixtures like chicory and orange poppy. You'll see that on Osborne Road in front of my house, but it's easy to do. There'll be very exotic trees. This is Magnolia microphylla. It is native. It looks somewhat prehistoric. That'll go to the left-hand corner. In the summertime, we'll have Asclepius tuberosa, which is a butterfly magnet. That area, because it's self-contained, can look like a butterfly garden, like you're in a conservatory with this plant. And we'll put Agastache, again, another native, purple and orange together. There'll be verbascums throughout the area, again, to give it a wild look. We're going to stay on the ruin look side, Stiphtenia cissima. Again, sustainability. This was our first event, just so the committee could meet one another and invite some people into talking, be enthusiastic. Our Horticultural Committee, I'm very, very proud of. Sandy, which has been a driving force to the mill product, is on the committee. Kai Peterson, he owns a very large landscape design and installation company. Glenda Byron, who's an avid gardener and a social activist. Matt Ross, the Education Director at Longwood Gardens. Chris Felber from Chanticleer Gardens on the main line. Dale Hendricks, a fine plantsman, nurseryman, I think you've heard him speak in the area before. Adrian Martinez, an internationally known artist. John Lilly, not only a Hooters, but a former garden installation owner as well. Andy Shank, Sam Brown's Nursery. To be on the Bridget will handle, she's not only a plantsman, but a social media wizard. That is the basis of the Hort Committee. We have our another meeting planned on in January. So, this group, I think, can provide fertile ground for some great ideas for the plan.
That's Hooters, as in the rock group from the 80s.
Yes, I'm sorry. I date myself.
Not the restaurant.
Not not the, yeah, restaurant.
All right. This how it works?
Yeah.
All right. Walk with me. Dream with me. So, you come across the bridge. We have parking here. We have parking over here. You the overlook will be at this spot right here. This is Building A. You'll overlook, this is raised, so when you look down this fence, it will be like you're looking down a meadow. I have kept open spaces here, 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 here. Stand-up tables for small cocktail parties. These square spaces can do 20 by 40 tents, so you can have art shows, you can have antique sales, you can have whatever in these spaces. Okay, this is a larger space where you could have a music event, you could have painters in any of these. You will actually enter the garden down the old pathway. You can enter here. You can come down, enter here. There is also a path that you can walk all the way around the garden. The old restrooms here, I'm going to put benches in them and just use it as a rest area. So, people can, you should have benches in the garden. There is a reel underneath the pad, okay, because it was water-driven. We're going to expose a portion of the reel, not the whole thing, just so people can see the historic significance. Those stones under there are hand-finished slabs. They're very beautiful. We want to show that off to tie into the purpose of the building itself. I see this area over here as a place to put large tents and weddings. This building used for catering. You can drive the catering trucks in here. They can unload here. The large building at the end, and I'm sure this is towards the end, but if you notice, it has a large opening on it, a stage in there with a small amphitheater in front of it and room for chairs, so it can be used for live performances. So, it's a multi-use area. It can be used all in the setting of a garden. This is going to be a two-acre garden. So, all of this will be catched in the garden. Blume, did you saw the run-through of how I tend to run through the season? Basically, it will only be three plants blooming at a time. Very strong, very forceful design, I think, very formal planting style with a very very formal design with a very loose naturalistic planting style on top of it. That seems to be, I thought I'm the best things at sliced bread, but it's very vogue in the gardening world right now. Questions, thoughts? Questions, thoughts? I'm all, I could.
I have I have a couple, just simple ones, I think. So, how many parking spaces do we have to the left and to the right or approximately how many cars we can?
I'm a guesstimate. I'm thinking 60 over here.
Yep. That's a minimum.
Because I've been stumbling around trying to do this. I think we have 40 over here.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Okay. And then, my next question is, and I don't know if this is a better township question or if this is a better, the Bonneville Mill will fall under the parks, I'm assuming, at some point. Who will will decide or how, you know, for functions if if, you know, if it's a public park and it might be better suited for you guys, if it's a public park and a couple wants to have a wedding, do they have to ask permission? It's a public park. And then, do they have to get, you know, how are we going to handle that if it comes to that?
Well, I think the township will have to form a committee to handle those things or make it part of the parks and rec and along with you gentlemen here, whoever on the board at the time, come up with fees for the use of the park. I looked online. I've seen fees as much as $3,000 per event, which most weddings today that want a unique setting like this, I think, would be willing to pay. If there's a parking issue, we could use the fire company, the parking lot, and they would get a fee if it's a, I mean, I can't see it being a super-large event, but, you know, the township or back here, we could use for parking. We've already been in touch with Craft. They've supplied shuttles to the Chester County Tours for us. They were prepared to provide a shuttle for this past week's event. So, it's designed to be a moneymaker. It's designed to be a regional draw, but for our residents, I think it's going to be a real point of pride. I know I'm very proud of the fact that I had no vision, Jay and I were talking about this back in 2003 and '04 when we were considering this. I didn't like being on the committee at first because I didn't see where it was going. I saw it as a as a black hole. Now, we've crested the wave and we're kind of at the top, looking down, seeing, this is huge. We brought Dave over there to help us with the native plantings behind the mill, and his question at the end of the walkthrough, which he walked the entire area, all the trails, he said, well, what are you doing with the pad? And other than saying, well, we're going to have a small garden there, I mean, he could see the wheels turning for him. I think I might have something there.
And we can't get more parking on the pad or we can?
Please, no.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because, and I'm not saying the whole thing, but if you only have 100 spots, I mean, the average wedding is 150 people, average. So, if if we could come up with 50 more spots someplace without without deterring the, I understand your concern, but my concern is, again, you know, average wedding. And again, if it's going to get to this point someday, you know, will we kick ourselves and say, we had an opportunity to use this for so many more things, but we, you know, I'm asking.
No, I don't see it that way. I'm involved with a garden in New York called Wade Hill, which is publicly one of the more successful gardens. It's up in the north end of Manhattan, right up at the Bronx area of Rosedale. It's a small space. It was residential. They and there's another garden outside of Seattle called Miller Garden. They both handle it in a different way. The Miller Garden caps the number of visitors for that space a day for events. These are all things you have to think about. And the garden in New York has valet service elsewhere. You come in at the parking lots or pool, they have a company that's not related to this, and they've taken this on to valet parks. That equally is left if you run a shuttle. You would visually mess it up by putting parking in that space, throwing the bowl. It's a wild, other nature than a park, trust me.
Trust me, I I but I have constituents that say all the time, how would you have a park if we can't get to it?
You got 60. You got, you have nearly 100 there. You have shuttle service. You've got, I think, there's 34 acres there. Sandy, do you have?
I do. Your question about who would manage the events, Upper Euclid Township has currently formed a committee. They have a park on Route 100. They restored a barn sitting back in there. I don't have enough address. And they have formed a committee in the township to talk about exactly what you said, how, who, what. And so, we're not the first township to talk about this. I'm sure there's other townships out there that we can follow in their path.
No, and I applaud the idea. I think it's phenomenal. And again, I certainly wouldn't want to be the first township doing this, and if we have others to to piggyback ideas off of, I think that's great.
They're not the first, but they're going to be the best. Okay? And it's not going to be just, even though it's for where I live, I believe, I could put in a garden, but it's.
I'm sorry.
People on the committee are thinking.
Pardon the interruption. Can I just ask any speaker in the audience to please use the lectern? I can hear you clearly, but the folks at home are not picking up any sound, so.
Good, good. I'm aroused about.
What's the timeline?
I get tied. I feel like I'm tethered.
What is the timeline?
Well, we're going to get the, we've got to get the concrete up, and we've got to test the soil. We have one of the committee members testing the pH of the soil. I assume that it's very alkaline with being under concrete, but we need to know what the soil pH is. We're doing what soil mix that we want into. After we get the concrete pad up, it will go a lot faster. The planting's not, and we have lots of volunteers who will help planting. It's just getting and leaving some pad for the heavy machinery to do there to do work on the mill itself. So, but once the pad's up, it can go pretty soon.
Is that going to be after the buildings are stabilized and?
Oh, I would say after Building A and C are stabilized, yeah.
I think C will be done.
Yeah. So, I'm looking at a year out to start planting even. I mean, it's exciting. Like, any other questions?
I just want to thank you and applaud you for your vision, for your commitment. As Hud said, when we acquired this property, it was under a development pressure, and we acquired it not really knowing what would happen with it, and I think this is very exciting.
Thank you. And I think. Thank you, and I think it has a template for other communities to use what can be done with these type of properties. We can lead the way, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, um, new business, twenty nineteen draft preliminary budget, Luke?
Yeah, this is me, good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, before you is, this is a, is a, a mouthful, this is a draft preliminary budget. The second-class township code requires that the, the Board of Supervisors adopt a preliminary budget and make it available, uh, to the public for viewing, at least twenty days prior to adopting a final budget. What's before you is not that preliminary budget, it's a first draft of the preliminary budget, prepared by the Budget Committee. Um, before I, I kinda dive into the contents that's before you, I wanna start with the mea culpa. I believe I misunderstood the, the intent of the board, uh, when it came to discussions of the fire company. Um, I was reviewing the minutes and I, I didn't see it in there, but I believe the chief asked a question specifically about what line item to leave in for, uh, municipal contribution to the fire company, and that was about two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand. I instead put in the number that was worked into the multi-municipal interim contract. Um, I, I, I stand corrected, that figure shown on your, on your, um, general fund, uh, should read the two-hundred-and-sixteen number. I will make that substitution prior to the next, uh, Budget Committee meeting. Uh, so before you are, are two documents. One, um, uh, previous member, uh, members of the board who've been here more than a year will recognize as just a simple line item budget. Uh, it, it breaks down expenses and revenues by category, and it's presented for, uh, a total of, of four funds. It's the general fund, it's the capital reserve fund, it's the state fund, and it is the developer, um, the developer contribution open space fund. The, the capital fund is further split into three categories. The township administration portion, the township public works portion, and the township, um, uh, who am I missing? The police. Uh, a document that's new, uh, this year, and I appreciate the, the hard work of the Budget Committee in, in producing such a document, is for selected line items, where what the line item is isn't abundantly obvious, uh, uh, we now have detailed forms for, uh, individual line items. Um, included in here would be, so, for an example, if a given committee had a list of projects they'd like to do in twenty nineteen, there's now a breakdown and some, uh, memorialization of, of what that committee wants to do in the next year, instead of just a line item with a dollar next to it. There is no action required this morning. Um, what I would like to ask the board for this morning is some direction on what sort of presentation, in a formal sense, you would like from me at your regular session in November. Um, other municipalities I've worked at, uh, management team comes in with a PowerPoint presentation and, and walks through changes year over year. Um, historically, we have not. Uh, the management team has submitted a budget that came out of the Budget Committee, and the board has taken a vote. I, I, I think there is some danger if you give me a, a green light to do a PowerPoint presentation, you may wanna gouge your eyes out by about a half an hour into it, but I will make the offer.
I don't think that's gonna be a power play, but, uh, PowerPoint, but I'm okay with... How about you guys?
I don't, I, I think the way we've done it in the past has worked pretty well, but, um, so I don't think it needs to be drawn out into a long PowerPoint presentation.
So what's before you is, is more or less what would appear at your regular session in November as the preliminary budget, less any changes, like I mentioned, the, the, the fire company. Uh, we also have a, a number of outstanding items. We have, uh, a few personnel decisions to be made yet, uh, direction provided by the board. Um, we have some, some very recent decisions on personnel matters to incorporate, and that we also have, um, uh, an ex- a significant expenditure, which is the township's health insurance, where we have not yet received a quote. We've budgeted very conservatively on that. I suspect that the, the actual figure when we receive it will be less than what's budgeted, but, uh...
I, I have one question, just looking this over briefly, because we just got it this morning. The, um, the next-to-last column, budget change, that's the percentage change over the previous year budget, not over the year-to-date, correct?
Correct, that is a comparison of the two thousand and eighteen column, uh, two thousand and eighteen budget column and the two thousand and nineteen proposed budget column. Uh, that was one of the changes that the Budget Committee recommended. Uh, we have breakdowns, uh, throughout with subtotals, and we also have some new columns on there. Um, I, 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 I know I briefly mentioned it, but the, the Budget Committee has greatly expanded from traditionally three members to, I believe, seven this year. And, uh, among them, I may lose count here, I believe there are four CPAs, and it is, uh, they've been outstanding to work with. I appreciate their investment of time and energy.
Okay, looks like we got a lot to read.
So Luke, is the goal then, at the regular meeting in November, to have the actual preliminary budget, and then you wait the twenty days after you advertise for adoption in December?
Sure, we're, we're prepared to advertise that the, the preliminary budget is available at the township office for public inspection on the Friday after your regular session, right before Thanksgiving, and then it's available for, for inspection for twenty days. Um, because there's a lot to take in, a- as, as you mentioned, uh, Vice Chairman, the, uh, the, the Budget Committee sets a self-imposed timeline of getting it to you earlier. So you have this two weeks in advance to, to form whatever, um, questions or recommendations you have two weeks in advance of the, the adoption of a preliminary budget.
Okay.
But if they have comments on what they're seeing today, they should be getting those to you prior to that meeting?
It would be easiest. Uh, you, you do have, so for example, if, if there's a recommendation for a major expense category, the, the second-class township code does require that you adopt a balanced budget. So if you're, if you intend to make recommendations that would potentially put us in deficit spending, uh, I would appreciate a heads-up so that staff could make recommendations for revenues or, or cutting expenses elsewhere.
Could you also, uh, update, uh, update us to the, um, to the changes that are, that have just happened in the last couple of weeks that aren't in this yet, so that we know, um, you know, just a simple email is fine, but, you know, we have a couple of things that just tweaked.
Yeah, it, it, this, it, I, I'll actually mention that the document you're seeing, the line item, is a Google spreadsheet. Uh, I can share with you a link, and you can see it in real time, if, if you're so inclined. Uh, I think, uh, perhaps a better way to go is, is kind of a punctuated, "Hey, I'm, I've, I've changed line item six."
Just so that it went off the search.
But in theory, you could have a real-time view of the budget as it gets tweaked.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay, um, so now, uh, we're gonna move on to the contract amendment for provision and delivery of construction materials for the stabilization of historic structures at Bonsville Mill Park and Nature Trails. Luke, again?
Yeah, that is me again. Um, in the spring of this year, we bid out lumber supplier for the, um, Bonsville Mill Committee. It was a purchase in excess of the, the mandatory advertised bid threshold. Um, so, uh, this was primarily for supplies for the stabilization of Building C, which is, um, you, you were just looking at, that's the, the prominent building that was seen in the presentation just moments ago. Uh, the, the Bonsville Mill Committee, uh, would like to purchase additional lumber from the same supplier, pursuant to the contract that was adopted in the spring. And so in your packet is a, uh, a, a letter memorializing changes to that existing contract. Your permission to, um, solicit the winning bidder to, to execute.
Okay.
Uh, I'll mention that the purchase is, um, is budgeted, is anticipated. Um, the, 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 this is purchases beyond what were bid, but of the same, it's material of the same, um, uh, it's... Basically, we're talking about lumber supplies here, so, so we're, we're talking linear...
Not changing the original asked-upon money, it's, it's, it's...
It's additional money, but it's for the similar labor, or, excuse me, lumber that was previously approved in the contract. So there, they've...
But it still meets the budget, I, that we...
Oh, overall budget.
Yes, in terms of overall budget, this is within what was approved for the, the Bonsville Mill Committee. It, it's, it's just that, uh, it's, it's, what we bid out was a minimum purchase, and, and it, it in no way limited us to that, some, just that, those purchases, we could buy more. And so what we're trying to do is buy more on the existing contract.
The existing contract contemplated, um, the ability to buy more pursuant to a written agreement, and that's what Luke has presented to you to sign off on.
I'll make a motion, we approve the contract amendment for the provision and delivery of construction materials for the stabilization of historic structures at Bonsville Mill Park and Nature Trails, dated November first, two thousand and eighteen.
I'm, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, okay, we're gonna go over to Ms. Camp for Pulte East Brandywine, Route three-twenty-two, and Bolinger Road Traffic Improvement Highway Occupancy Permits.
So this requires a little bit of explanation. Pulte is obligated to do a, uh, intersection improvement at Bolinger Road and Route three-twenty-two. They have that designed and permitted, their, um, one component of it has not been permitted, and that is that there are stormwater management facilities that will be located within the right-of-way of Route three-twenty-two, which is obviously a state highway. PennDOT has taken a position that any, and this is going back several years now, that even though it's their road, they're not going to be responsible for the maintenance of stormwater facilities within a state road. The way ten, the way townships have been handling that is if, when a development's being designed, you know that there's going to be stormwater facilities in a state road, the township is being asked to be a co-permittee on the application for the HOP. The township has had developers take on that obligation, sign a development agreement or a operation and maintenance agreement for the stormwater facilities that gets recorded against the property, so that basically you've shifted the responsibility to the, to the developer to maintain those facilities within a state road.
Huge shifting.
And I, I would tell you, though, when I represented Mr. Starkman on the daycare, that was something that Mr. Starkman and his company had to take on. There was going to be new stormwater facilities within Hopewell Road that he had to agree that his, the landowner was gonna maintain. In this situation, because the homeowner's declaration has already been signed off and recorded, Pulte's in a catch-twenty-two. They are obligated to get the township to be the co-permittee on the HOP application specific for the storm facilities, but the homeowner's association declaration, Pulte doesn't control anymore and can't get the homeowners to take on another obligation, at least not without probably litigation. And so what they're asking the township to do is, will you agree that not only will you be the permittee, will you continue to maintain the facilities that are gonna be built within three-twenty-two?
So this, again, goes right back to what I was just talking about. It's the state's problem, they turn it on to us, and then now it's our problem, um, and it's their property. So, again, Pulte's required to do this, so I, my opinion is, Pulte should be the sole responsibility holder for this down the road and...
Yeah, and, and I don't disagree, except that that's not practical, because I'm sure it's a single-purpose entity that Pulte created for that development, and there, the reality of it is, is that the township's going to be here in perpetuity, Pulte isn't.
So is there a way for us to require Pulte to post basically a bond or, or create an escrow account where they fund it, that we estimate what the, the, um, the maintenance costs are gonna be in perpetuity, have them put a sum of money into a fund that we then hold?
We could ask, I mean, I, I wanted, to me, I wanted to quantify it, right? So I asked Allison Zarra, representing Pulte, to tell us what specifically are we talking about? We're talking about one standard inlet box, two special inlet boxes, two type-four manholes, eighteen-inch RCP for six-hundred-and-sixty-five linear feet, and one concrete end section. And then I said to Matt, "Matt, is this something that there's other instances within the township where the township is maintaining stormwater facilities that are located within a PennDOT road?" And I'll let Matt answer the question himself.
Well, the, uh, the ones we are maintaining are in front of the township building for, uh, those two inlets, which are located within PennDOT property. Now, I know we own the, we own the property here, but there are, uh, two inlets located there that we are maintaining, even though they're on PennDOT property.
Matt, to answer Jay's question, is there, is there any sort of estimate that you could prepare or provide as to what would be the additional expenses if the township does take on this obligation to maintain the facilities that I just talked about? Is there some sort of guesstimate that we could, you know, share with Pulte to say, "Okay, we'll do this, but we want this number of dollars per however many years out"? I don't know how far out you wanna go.
Well, all of these facilities have a life expectancy, and they're gonna have to be replaced or repaired at some point in time. I, I think it's, I know that's a, a big ask, Matt, because what's the cost of an inlet twenty years from now, or thirty years, or forty years, whenever that one fails? But I think we should try to come up with some reasonable number and say to Pulte, "Okay, we're gonna accept this responsibility, but you're gonna fund, you're, you're gonna put money into a fund to handle it."
Yeah, the state doesn't maintain the roadway, they're spreading salt, the salt's getting into it, the trash is accumulating, that's getting into it. It's ultimately the township's responsibility for a state prog- uh, problem that the, that the developer is responsible to do to ten-years-ago standards, is really what it boils down to. So I, I don't think that, that the township should be on the hook for a state problem that was, uh, agreed upon with Pulte.
Is that, Matt, is that something you think you could do?
Um, like you said, it would, I think it would be very difficult, because, um, to open an inlet and clean trash out of it is very simple, but, um, if the, what, six-hundred-and-fifty feet, I think, of, uh...
Six-hundred-and-sixty-five, yeah.
Um, you know, if that fails, then, then that's a big expense. Um, we're looking at, like Aspen Drive, uh, a lot of the storm sewer system in there is corrugated metal pipe, which doesn't last as long, and we're looking, um, at some point having to replace a lot of that, and that's a big-ticket item.
Do we know what the cor- uh, the, the six-hundred-and-fifty, I mean, I'm sure it was, it was proposed a budget, uh, for them? Do we know what it was gonna cost to build that, that...
For this?
Yeah.
We, I'm sure they have it, I'm sure Pulte has prepared something for themselves, I'm not sure they shared that with us, because this is, because it's within a state road, and because it's a new requirement that came after their plans were approved, they didn't have to post escrow for it. But I'm sure their engineers have this, a line item. But the, what I was gonna suggest that we do is have a conversation with Panoni, and try to explain to them the situation, and to see if they have, they're in the business of reviewing opinion of probable costs, and coming up with, you know, cost in, in the future to repair and replace. So I would suggest that I have a conversation, either myself and Matt, maybe we can get on the phone with Nate and see what he, he would suggest.
And I don't, I think we should ask Pulte for, uh, the cost estimates on constructing all of this. If they want us to be the co-permittee on the, on the plant, on the permit, we have a right to know...
Yeah, sure.
What's involved, what the cost is, and so forth.
Agreed.
All right, well, I'll do some more digging and get some more information, and we can have another conversation at the next meeting.
Thank you. Subdivision and zoning applications, we have none this morning. Ordinance and resolutions for considering, um, a zoning ordinance amendment to the MU District, signs and accessory dwellings, permission to advertise. Luke, I guess, now, Scott and Scott?
That would be me. Um, the ordinance task force and, has been working on, uh, these amendments outside of the, um, vision partnership program. Uh, these were actually, uh, overlooked when we were took, taking, or putting everything together. Uh, it was discovered, and, um, the, uh, well, the signs issue was, uh, raised when, uh, Crocs Market, um, came in and wanted two, uh, signs of a hundred square feet. Our current ordinance language allows twenty-five square feet. Uh, they'd be allowed two signs because they front on North Guthrie'sville Road and Torsue Pike. Uh, so we wanted to take care of that and make an allowance for the larger signs for the larger stores in the, uh, MU, VC, CSLI, TND one and two districts, and also the, um, deleting one, uh, sub-paragraph to allow for, um, certain accessory structures to be used as accessory dwellings. Currently, the language says that the accessory structure has to be in place, had to have been in place prior to March seventeenth, nineteen ninety-eight. We've had quite a few zoning hearings, which, um...
We've had quite a few zoning hearings, which, um, uh, sought a variance from that requirement, which were granted, so, uh, the decision was, uh, was made to eliminate that language. And again, this is the request to send the, uh, send this to, um...
County Planning.
The County Planning Commission. Thank you.
So it's not permission to advertise, you went to 247 review?
Correct. Wait a minute, I'm sorry. It was submitted to the County Planning Commission, yes.
Have the 247 review back?
Yes, we do. I'm sorry.
I don't think it has. I, I don't think it has. My, my notes indicate that we were going to get their permission to send it to the...
That's, that's correct.
County, and then you're going to have the Township Planning Commission look out on the 7th.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of ordinances floating around, so I think it's hard to keep track of them all, so this one has not been sent yet.
Right.
I'll make a motion that the zoning ordinance amendments to the MU District signs, accessory dwellings be submitted to the County Planning Commission for 247, Act 247 review.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. My apologies.
Public comment for agenda items? Seeing none, do I have a notice, uh, uh, I don't think we have any notices, uh, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.